Welcome. Welcome, everybody, to the February 15 City Council Work Session. Glad to see you all here. It should be an interesting presentation. I'm going to just take a minute to get the sense of the council. Councilor Zelenka has a motion. And if you all think we can do this fairly quickly, we'll do it right up front now. If you think you need time to talk about it, I'm going to let the Project for Public Spaces report go first. You feel like you need some time on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm going to hope that we have 10 minutes at the end of this meeting to do that. And if we have to extend it, we will. But we'll do our presentation first. So, City Manager.
Thank you. And I'll ask the team, come on up. I understand, Will. I'm turning it over to you for starters, so.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to share the latest work on Places for People, our downtown place-making project. If you recall, Nan and I gave you a project update in October, at which time we discussed the selection of Project for Public Spaces, or PPS, as our consultant, the project goals, and the ongoing public engagement work. Now, the public engagement work has been summarized when it was an attachment in your AIS. It's also available on our website. And today, I'm pleased to introduce Meg Walker from PPS to share this project with you. Although this is their final presentation in Eugene, the work that you're about to see is draft recommendations for your review and comment before PPS continues to make their final report.
Thank you.
And I'm going to make just a couple comments before you show us the PowerPoint. So you know what we're trying to do. We're trying to create an experience downtown that is primarily pedestrian, safe, interesting, welcoming, places to go, but places where you could just bump into other people. We're trying to create that experience for our downtown. City Hall, downtown development, economic development, finding places for people, finding services for people, all of these projects and processes are really tied together. And we've been coordinating as much as we can. So this project, Places for People Downtown, is really a partnership project. And I expect those partnerships that we're investing in with Meg's help will continue throughout this entire effort.
Thank you. Excuse me. So hello, everybody. I'm really happy to be here. This has been actually an incredibly exciting project for us. And I think I owe it a lot to the friendliness of your staff and the friendliness of Eugene and Eugene residents. It's one of these places that we look forward to visiting. And some of my colleagues said, "Oh, we're so sorry. We can't come with you. We love Eugene." So coming from New York, you know Eugene is a very special place. So I'm happy to be here. I'm going to give you, this is a draft. It's a work in progress. And obviously, we're really interested in your input and your comments. So I'm going to go through, if you, you know, and also your questions. So we'll, I think we'll go straight through. Or do we want to stop for questions if we, what do you think?
Go forward.
Yeah.
If we need to.
Yeah.
At your direction.
Yeah, at your direction. We can, we can stop and answer questions. So just a little bit about Project for Public Spaces. We are a nonprofit organization located in New York City. We work all over the place, all over the world. And we do work on all types of public spaces, from parks in downtowns and squares to public markets and transportation projects, campuses, so every kind of public space you can imagine, we've worked on. We've been around for 40 years. We've worked in 43 countries, 50 states, many, many communities. So we've seen a lot of cities and a lot of downtowns and worked with a lot of different communities. We do what we call place-making. And we didn't exactly invent the term, but I think it is, we've imbued it with a certain meaning that I think is very significant, which is, it's really a collective effort to reimagine and reshape your public spaces so they become the heart of your communities. And we believe that place-making strengthens that attachment between people and place that will build stronger communities in lots of different ways. So it's really about people coming together with place. And our work is based on the work of William H. White, who wrote back in the 70s, he wrote The Social Life of Small Urban Spaces. He studied how people use public space and used time-lapse film. And our work kind of developed out of his observations about public space. And one of them was, what attracts people most, it would appear, is other people. And that's kind of, it sounds like a simple thing, but we sometimes forget that that's what people are looking for in a public space, in a downtown, in a park. They're looking for positive activity. And when they see it, they want to be part of it. And that's, and that's an important part of what we're thinking about in downtown Eugene. We've developed this diagram over the years to describe what we think are the key attributes to a great public space or a great place. And first and foremost is uses and activities, that people have things to do. People are really attracted, not by design, but really by activities. And we look for activities that, that really cater to a cross-section of your community, to everybody, young and old, different incomes, different ethnic groups, different cultures. So we're looking to attract the broadest, you know, really the broadest population we can. We use other tools, comfort and image, which is about making a space attractive, but it's also about making it comfortable so that people will linger. Access and linkages, can you walk there? Can you bike there? Can you park nearby? Can you reach it by multi modes of transportation? And can you find it? That's important, too. Can you see it? And sociability, which is really, to me, maybe the most important thing, because it's really about, in my mind, bringing people together, whether it's bringing a family together or a whole community together, for spontaneous interaction or for formal community gatherings. Public space is used for all different types of social interaction. Now, the goals for this project were developed and tweaked, and tweaked again, by the city staff with input from Stakeholder Advisory Board. And the first one really is about creating vibrant, engaging public spaces in the downtown that appeal to everyone, so that everybody feels welcome and feels safe. And the second one ties into that. Ensure safety and security for everyone. Attract new businesses, catalyze new development, and create a mix of uses. And that's, you know, something that city staff is really working on. We're seeing that happening in a variety of ways in the downtown now, including new residential development. Give downtown Eugene a sense of place and a unique identity, and really build on its identity. Build on the character that you already have down there. Embrace downtown, this is kind of getting into the bigger picture of the downtown, because our goals are really not just for the public spaces, it's also kind of for the downtown as a whole. Embrace downtown Eugene as the city's center for culture and commerce. We want everyone in the, in the city, maybe even the region, to think about Eugene, downtown Eugene, as their center, their community center. Connect the key public spaces with walkable, bikeable streets as places. So we think of streets as public spaces, too, to be activated, to be made safe. Wasn't really part of our charge in terms of looking at them carefully, but it really, in order to sustain the place-making over time, streets really become part of it. Create a citywide, ongoing place-making campaign for the downtown. And that's our Places for People idea, that this is something that's not going to stop with this particular project or report, that it will continue over time, and that it will address other public spaces in a similar means, really. And you can also call it People for Places. Places for People. So, beginning in August, we arrived in August and then came back in October, and we've engaged with your community in a, in a whole variety of ways. So we, I've done a number of interviews and focus groups with over 16 organizations and at least 100 people, and many phone interviews as well. So while we were there, on our site visits, we engaged with people. We've been doing it, I've been doing it on this visit as well. But we also did many phone interviews. We did activity mapping in August and October and November, where we went out and actually mapped, and we got volunteers, actually some city staff and other residents of Eugene to help us, map the activity in the public spaces. And who was there? What are they doing? How many people? We did two place-making workshops with a total of 60 participants, where people went out on site and actually came up with ideas for improving the public spaces. We did 12 pop-up place-making stations where we engaged with people around the city, with about 250 participants. And that was kind of simple questions that they could answer, and simple ideas about how would you improve the downtown, what do you want to do downtown, and some ideas for some specific spaces. And then we did a residence survey that went out by SurveyMonkey, so that it was available to, you know, well, to your entire city population, really. And we got close to 2,000 responses, which we think, for a short period of time, was actually a really good, a really good response. Now, to summarize our key findings, you have seen our findings report, city council members, but it's also available online for others to see. So anybody who's watching this might want to check this out. And it actually summarizes what we found through all that community engagement process. And I just, I'm going to give a brief summary. We can't go into a lot of, there's a lot of detail in that report, so I'm just giving you a brief summary. Some of the strengths, strengths that we heard from people and that we observed as well, and this is also some of our own opinions and assessments, there's a huge potential with the downtown. And a lot of people said that it's turning around. It's the, it's a turning point for the downtown. We're attracting new businesses. There are new restaurants downtown. There's more to do. It's a really good time for the downtown. They're great destinations. We asked people, what are, what are your favorite destinations in the downtown? And the top three were the library, the Halt Center, and both markets kind of came out. Markets are destinations, you know, they may not be places, but they become places on a Saturday. The central area is very walkable. I think when you're around the central part of Willamette and Broadway, it's extremely walkable and very pedestrian-friendly, so we think that's a plus. You've got an amazingly creative and engaged population in the city, and they passionately desire a center, a center for their community, a center that they can go to. And so we, we are just amazed at how many really, you know, smart, creative, and energetic people there are in the city. So you are very lucky. And we're also, I also want to say that your staff has just been incredible. And I don't think I've worked with a staff like this anywhere, that is so creative and energetic, I mean, and dedicated. So I want to tell you that your staff has been just spectacular. So, moving on to the weaknesses, I think from our, if you read our findings report, it probably came out loud and clear, that safety, the safety issue in the downtown has reached what we would say is a, is a sort of a crisis level, and it must be addressed. And that's a big package to, you know, to talk about. It's, it's a big thing to unpack. We are not, and I am not, a social service provider. I'm not a human service provider. I am an architect and an urban designer. But we have, and we have encountered these problems in other cities, and we've worked with cities that have, you know, similar issues. But I want to say that I don't think, and I've, I've worked all over the country, and many of my colleagues have, I don't think I've seen anything quite this serious. And I want to, I want to, I want to say this frankly, that because you have a small downtown, and you're a small city, and you're, and this population that we're going to talk about is concentrated in a small area, it does come across as a much more serious problem, obstacle, barrier, whatever you want to call it, than it would in another city like Seattle or Portland or, or in New York City. So where it's much more diffused. So I, we can, we can talk about this a little more. Obviously, we can't spend a lot of time talking about solutions today, but that's, you know, I want to make this observation, that this has to be addressed. Because, oops, because many Eugene residents say they don't come downtown because they feel unsafe. The public perceives one user group dominating the public spaces. Their behavior, they find intimidating. They described in the surveys many different types of behaviors that were off-putting and downright, you know, repelling, really. So people felt very uncomfortable and often fearful. And we've, but we also heard from your population, in, you know, whether it was in our focus groups or in their surveys, that they feel there's not enough being done. There's a lot of compassion in the city, and a tremendous amount of compassion and care, and, you know, and people who are really sensitive to this issue. And I can't stress that enough, really. And so we've heard from a number of people that they feel there's not being enough done for the homeless, for substance abusers, for the mentally ill, and troubled youth. Things such as affordable housing and supportive housing, treatment programs, day shelters, and a number of other recommendations that we've heard, that obviously require resources and, and a lot of, and staff and so on. But we think it's, you know, it's absolutely critical. So we can talk about it a little more, but we're not going to get into it in a lot of detail. So, but on the other hand, looking at this from a public space planner's point of view, which is what I am, we also see there's a lack of everyday activity downtown, and particularly in, particularly in your public spaces, to attract a critical mass of people and a variety of people who will help to diffuse the problem and also make it safe and vibrant. Now, and this gets back to William White's point, is people attract people, but it's people doing positive things. So if you see people having fun in your downtown, you want to have fun. If you see people, you know, dealing drugs, that's something else. So it's the, it's the positive activity that really need to, we need to build up. We also heard that there's not enough for families. And we heard that from, from, from families themselves, from parents, and, but also from other, in focus groups and so on, that there are not enough activities for kids and families, well, they don't want to bring their families downtown because they feel unsafe as well, and they don't want their kids to see some of that, some of the negative activity that's going on in the public spaces. So, but, we, we do think, you know, you saw what happened in your winter days over the holidays, when there was a lot of positive activity going on in the park blocks, and families were coming downtown, and kids were enjoying themselves. So we believe it's not a heavy lift to do something like that, that that's, you know, quite possible. Now, some of the things we heard in the survey, with, with almost 2,000 responses, we asked people, what three words would you use to describe the downtown, and what three words would you use to describe the public spaces? And we did not prompt, we didn't give them any words to pick from. So they came up with these words, and we heard these words over and over and over again throughout the survey. So, you know, the top three, dirty, homeless, and unsafe, we heard again and again and again. And I find it odd that people said dirty, because I actually don't find downtown Eugene dirty at all. But this is the perception. What is it that makes people say that, you know? And the only positive thing they mentioned in the top 10 was potential. Some of, there's about 15 down you might find vibrant, you might find, you know, some other positive words, but it was just really overwhelmed by negative words. And then in our pop-up stations, where we engaged about 250 people, these, when we asked people, what do you want to do downtown, and we tried to do that at every one of the stations, these were the answers. So 15% of the folks said, "We want to feel safer." We were trying to actually get them to talk about activities and fun things to do downtown and be constructive, but they always started with, you know, "We need to feel safer," in various words. I would say that summarizes what they were saying. And they wanted to improve the physical environment, so in a variety of ways, whether it was greening it up or creating more, you know, seating, but there was a variety of ideas for improving the environment. But they also, and then shopping and more food and beverages, parking came up a lot. But here's services for the homeless. So people are thinking about, how do you deal with this issue? They're not just saying, "We feel unsafe." They want, you know, to see some, something done. And they also are interested in events and festivals and performances. And I will mention that in the survey, a lot of people said that they loved the Eugene celebration, they loved First Friday, they want more things like that, and particularly events that revolve around the arts and performance arts and performing arts and visual arts. So there was a surprising, oh, I wouldn't say surprising, this is what Eugene is all about, but it really did stand out to me that there was a strong, you know, interest in that. So general recommendations, before I get into the individual public spaces. As I said before, we think that number one thing that needs to be addressed is safety and social service interventions above all. You can't really do anything else. You can do winter days, but you may not be able to sustain it over time, something like that, without also providing places for people to go, services for people. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a, I would say it's like a three-legged stool. And there's, it's like a three-pronged approach. And we've actually undertaken this kind of approach in the second bullet in a number of places, including Port Authority in New York City, Bryant Park, and, and other smaller cities and parks. But we see, you know, you have to do these three things. In order to make the downtown safe and welcoming, you need to, first of all, it's bold action. But the act, the bold action needs to include social service interventions, including the housing, maybe day shelters, maybe treatment facilities, et cetera, programming and activation, which will start to overwhelm the negative activity with positive activity, and significant physical changes in some of the spaces. And we think that you're, and you saw that in our findings report, that we kind of looked at some, especially the park blocks, have some issues. And so these need to be addressed physically. And so we're proposing some bold action in some of these spaces. So also, we need to get the critical mass of people downtown, especially families and children. We need to attract them with events and activities and commercial uses that cater to families and, you know, a broader section, cross-section of your population. And we'll talk about this a little more, too, later, but immediate short-term interventions and experiments that could pave the way for long-term changes. So what can you do right away that can start to, you know, change the equation, shift the paradigm? So overall, we looked at these four public spaces, and the, the park blocks first and foremost, which we're calling Eugene Civic Square, Broadway Plaza, which, I have to say, we've, we've been calling Keysee Square, because everybody's been calling it Keysee Square. So in this, in this presentation, I'm going to call it Keysee, because I'll slip back into it no matter what. But I know it's formally called Broadway Plaza. So these are the sort of two major public spaces in the downtown. And then the Halt Center Plaza, adjacent to your Halt Performing Arts Center and the Hilton Hotel, and the Library Plaza, which really has four institutions around it, the library, the Lane County Community College, the atrium with the City Hall Services, or City Services, and the LTD bus station. So these kind of are really important magnets in the downtown that support your public spaces. In other words, you've got institutions, oh, and then I should say, the future City Hall, where, north of the park blocks. And we've looked a little bit also at the, where the farmer's market is and the Free Speech Plaza, but we haven't focused on them as much as we have the two park blocks. So we've, we think of these as major destinations, kind of, we, we want them to support the rest of the downtown. We want to see them as symbiotic with, with activities and uses that can go on throughout the downtown. But we're focusing on these public spaces. And we also like to think of these corridors as the important connectors. So if you were to tell a visitor how you would get from one public space to another, and you wanted to focus on making them more pedestrian-friendly, we would say that Willamette is your major spine, because it's your, you know, traditional main street, and it connects many of them, either directly or they're right off of Willamette. And then 8th Avenue is going to be a major connector. It's already beginning to be, to the Riverfront and the Riverfront Development over there. And Broadway is a major connector for your sort of retail and entertainment uses. And it's, and these are already, Broadway and Willamette in the center, central part of the downtown are very walkable, but they could get better up at these, you know, when you get up to 6th and 7th Avenues, and 8th Avenue could become more walkable. So these are important things to look at. And you do have a great streets report that we think is really excellent. So I'm going to talk about the park blocks first. We developed goals, working with, with staff, about what the park blocks could be. And we really see it now with the City Hall, with the proposed City Hall, being located to the north of the park blocks. The, this, park blocks will become the civic square for all of Eugene. So it'll be a gathering place for the city. It will be the city's living room and family room, where people will want to come to meet their friends, you'll want to come for community gatherings, for big community events, potentially. So this is a major focus. It's a destination that will accommodate families and downtown, downtown employees with passive and active uses all week long, including weekends and evenings. Permanent home for both farmers and Saturday markets. We want to make each park block more flexible, permeable, visible, and accessible. And we want to see more traffic calming on 8th Avenue and Oak, so that you can easily get between the park blocks. And we also heard from folks that they really like that Northwest, or Pacific Northwest character, that they would love to maintain that character in the park blocks. As you know, there's, there are these stone walls and a lot of shrubbery around the perimeter of the park blocks. We think that's actually creating a real barrier and making them, kind of cutting them off and making them very insular and inward-focused. And so in order to make them more outward-focused, we think you really need to start with a clean slate and actually take those walls down. They're blocking views, they are creating hiding places, they're creating sleeping places, and we think it needs to be more open. And also, provide you more space for programming. We, we see this all, including the, you know, future farmer's market plaza or City Hall Plaza, the Free Speech Plaza on the park blocks, as sort of one big potential gathering space in the future. If you were to have a celebration, you could consider closing 8th and Oak and actually, you know, becoming a big public space. But today, we're going to talk mostly about the individual, these two spaces. So we see this one on the west, the West Park Block, as the more kind of grown-up plaza, because it, we see it catering more to downtown employees, City Hall and county employees. It's really accessible from, from your, you know, the heart of your downtown. And, and we think it's the first kind of stop, if you're somebody who works in the downtown or you're visiting. So we see this as more of, of the living room, more for grown-ups. And the East Park Block, we see as a family park, a place where you can have play activity for kids. And you still have some, or maybe a lot of performance activity going on there, but think of it as a place where families will want to come. And the West Park Block concept is about creating, you know, I said, we want to kind of open it up more, taking those walls out. We're thinking also about, and I want to preface this by saying, these are design ideas that we've developed, but they are only examples of what could be done. We think, we, we have a lot of experience in recommending uses, activities, you know, functions that we think will work. functions that we think will work. So we develop design ideas around those functions. But you could design it in a variety of ways. So this is, we are not designing it, but we’re giving you an example of what it could look like. So we think that there should be a central flexible space that can be used for a variety of games and small-scale performances. And it could also be kind of a space for yoga or dancing. But any rate, kind of a, this is the living room. And it’s surrounded by seating, outdoors, movable seating, a small kiosk that could be used for food and games, and also some storage. And then we think that’s actually also an important entry point where you might want to have some information. So it could also double as an information kiosk. And then moving around seating here, movable seating that faces out onto the, and this could be, we don’t see this as a lawn particularly, but it could be paved with soft material like compacted, decomposed granite, gravel, that kind of thing. And then we see garden seating down here. This is sort of an entry plaza coming from Keyzee Square over here and Broadway. But more of a passive area. People did say they liked, they would like to be able to sit and read a book and sit in the shade and enjoy, you know, kind of nature there. So an area to enjoy nature and more seating around this edge. And then we’d like to replace the fountain that’s there with a more natural fountain, keep the salmon jumping, but make it into an interactive and beautiful kind of stone And then art displays. I’ll talk a little bit about art, but we think there should be opportunities for temporary art. So we’re thinking a kiosk with outdoor seating, and it could serve a number of functions. And it’s like movable seating and small-scale performances potentially on the site. Games, foosball, ping pong, shuffleboard, bocce, chess tables, and this kind of thing, we think would actually be a real enhancement and attract, this is like the positive activity that we’re talking about. In ways to enjoy nature with, you know, a natural fountain. It could be a play fountain or a wading pool, and then comfortable seating that kind of puts you in nature. On a busy weekday, this could be lunch down there with food trucks, additional, you know, additional food, games. So this could become a really lively destination at lunchtime on a weekday. And on the East Park Block, the family-oriented block, this, we’re thinking about it, you know, for a younger audience, but we also see this as an important place for performances. And it has served that purpose until now. We think that that purpose, that function should continue, but with a new stage that’s very flexible, very usable for a variety of different groups, and a seating area for the performances that can also double as a game area. This could be a softer place like a lawn or a turf area where kids could play in a lot of different ways and where people could sit for performances comfortably. But we also see four as a game area, where you could get more kid-friendly games and a play area, so to really promote the family idea and potentially a spray pad. We’re not sure that you need water everywhere, but it’s something to consider here. So different, you know, look to different types of stages. What you need is something that’s fairly large but can be used also for small performances, is very flexible and versatile for a variety of different types of lighting setups and different types of music and theater. And then a lawn that can be used for picnicking, for yoga or games or tai chi in the morning, and for kids, I could imagine like the local daycare center bringing kids here and having access to this playground in a box, and they unpack it and the kids could play there. And a play area, small, but, you know, it can be small but intense. And then the Farmers Market across the street, I just wanted to toss out, we’re not looking at it very carefully, but I wanted to mention that we’ve talked about to Angela Norman, who is the manager of the Farmers Market, about having a covered market hall, which we think is a terrific idea. And we actually work on markets a lot, so we’ve seen, we have a lot of examples of interesting market halls. But one of the things that we haven’t heard, but I wanted to throw out because I think it might be interesting to think about, is as part of your City Hall, creating a great hall or a community room that could be a very flexible indoor public space that could be used for different types of programming when you have, you know, when it’s too rainy to do something outside, or the Farmers Market needs, may need an indoor space because the rain is coming down sideways. But something that could be used for a variety of functions. And we’ve seen this in some city halls that could be very useful. And then incorporating art, and this is about really all your public spaces. How can you think about incorporating temporary art, maybe getting different artists involved every year, and it could be rotating, and it could be a program that people look forward to, and they come downtown to see what the art is like this summer or this month? So this is kind of the overall concept with the versatile, flexible space here and the Farmers Market Plaza potentially there, and our performance space, play, and so on. And we wanted to show you that actually we’ve tried a layout for the Saturday Market because we want to make sure that they don’t lose any spaces, that they can still be in the park blocks, they still have access from the streets, and yet you could still have some play going on potentially while they’re there. But we also think by taking those walls out and reshaping your streets a little bit, you actually create some extra space around the perimeter for more market tents. So we think it can work. This is just a quick, you know, sketch, but it could be developed further. But we think that there’s potential, you know, to get even more tents in there if they need them. And this is an example of what it might look like from the corner, looking in. We’ve got yoga going on in the West Park Block, a kiosk with a covering so you get some rain protection, weather protection. So then, moving on to Keyzee, and these are our goals. Am I okay on time? Okay. Just want to make sure that, all right. Goals for Keyzee. We see it as the heart of the downtown commercial and entertainment district and the center of a burgeoning innovation community. So you’ve got tech companies moving downtown, more that want to come downtown, you know, a place for your tech employees, your young tech employees to come would be great. They, you know, they have the Barn Light and some other great restaurants and hangouts in the downtown. But a public space that can actually accommodate them is also something to think about. So we think it’s obviously a key downtown intersection, maybe the key downtown intersection. We want it to be a place that attracts people morning to night, so that it actually will change the whole character of that neighborhood because it’s alive all the time and you see again that activity. You see it, you know, it’s outdoors. And we think it should focus on food and beverage as an entertainment. So as you know, you’ve got actually a great food cart program going on right now. We think this is what we would call a lighter, quicker, a cheaper intervention that is pretty good. However, it only is there a couple hours a day. It’s only serving people a couple of hours a day. They are coming and they’re enjoying it, and they’re sitting out there and they’re, you know, and they’re really, we sat there, we had lunch there, we think it’s great. But that’s only a couple of hours a day. We need to extend that to the entire day and to the weekends. So thinking about that, we also, you know, we obviously, we want to focus on the Keyzee sculpture. We think that’s very important. It’s a real attraction in your downtown. So how can that become sort of a focal point? So this is our bubble diagram. We would, I think ideally, if we could, we would recommend that you open up those walls around the square and put restaurants and cafes in there that would spill out. But you don’t own those buildings, so we’re doing, we’re trying to recommend the next best thing. And that is create a kind of café, beer garden idea that kind of wraps around the blank walls and creates the same feeling as you would have if you were, if you had indoor spaces spilling out. So some type of lightweight structure, and then a beer garden and flexible seating area that would be open to the public, partially covered by a canopy, a platform with the Keyzee sculpture on it right at the corner where people can sit. And then thinking about activating the corners here with vending and thinking about kind of how people could take ownership of some of the other public spaces. And so you start to think about this whole thing as a square, as a plaza. And activating, you know, your ground, it’s very important to have active ground floor uses, and I actually didn’t stress that enough in the park blocks. It’s really important for a public space to have retail or commercial activity or food activity on the ground floor. And I forgot to mention that about the park blocks. But activating the perimeter of the park blocks is really, really important, as it is here. And you’ve got some great uses going on here with the Starbucks and the Sizzle Pie and Barn Light, you know, fantastic. They’re doing a great job. Be great to have some more active uses on that corner. So this is our kind of concept, where you could have a little mini café or right café or interior of a, what would you call it, a little restaurant, eatery, or beer garden, and a lounge here. And this was what it would look like outside, so that you’re actually, it’s a beer garden. It could, it could look like this also, and it could have a retractable canopy so that it could be open on sunny days and at night, when, you know, when the place is closed. So it’s not always providing shelter. But we think shelter is important, so to get people to use it all year round, maybe even heaters, like this has heaters in it. And other ideas for how you could create a lightweight structure that could actually be, it could be there for five years, it could be there for 10 years, but maybe if something were to open up in those spaces adjacent, you could move it to another place, another park, another public space. So some kind of prefab structure or something made of containers, something very transparent, just a few examples, something that has green. We heard that people would love this space to be greener. So how can you incorporate green on the roof potentially, crawling up the walls? Doors, you could have glass doors that completely open on fine days where the indoor and outdoor really become seamless. It could be very transparent like this, but with also some greenery. This is the indoors of that with more greenery. And on the corners, we think, you know, think about having some mobile food carts or temporary food kiosks that start to occupy all the corners of this space, so that you really, it’s not just the Keyzee Square corner, but you think about this as a larger space. So this is our image of what we think it could look like, with a canopy and a green roof and very transparent, so that it feels like it’s almost coming out of the buildings. So the library is an interesting space. It’s really made up of, we think of the four corners, as I pointed out earlier in the bigger map. We think it’s a welcoming gateway and can be even more welcoming to downtown Eugene. A lot of people coming in through the bus station, the LTD. People, a lot of people come down to the library. The library can be a kind of starting point for people to explore the rest of the downtown. So it’s important to welcome them there. We think, you know, it’s actually a pretty good street, but it could be, if you want to have more activities on the sidewalks, you may want a little more traffic calming. It should be, we see a lot of teenagers there, families coming to the library, of course, college students, the community college. These are our users primarily, but, you know, visitors are coming through here too. And convert the atrium to retail in the long term when, you know, the city’s no longer there, could we have active uses back in the atrium building and on the ground floor? So we do see a lot of teenagers hanging out here. You know, we think that this kind of hangout behavior could be normalized. It’s, this kind of hangout behavior, we don’t see as necessarily unsafe. Teenagers are coming in by bus and they’re meeting each other, and then they’re, you know, exploring the downtown. Not, this is normal behavior for teenagers all around the world. So how can we make it look less sort of, I don’t know, intimidating? But they’re not necessarily doing bad things here. There’s a lot of space in front of the library and in front of the other buildings too that can be utilized in a variety of ways. So our bubble diagram, we want the library to have more activities, like pulling the indoor activities outside. So more seating next to the entry, an outdoor reading room, and then the café spilling out so that it actually could have a canopy and/or umbrellas, and it could kind of take over the corner potentially. We see better seating at the LTD Plaza and potentially more information and food. And then at the atrium, creating a better entrance plaza here, and activities for students to come out and kind of meet with each other, study outside in front of the community college. So this is kind of what it could look like near the entry to the library, some, an outdoor reading room, café activities, seating, and seating perhaps by the atrium building and by the community college. And this is 30th Street Station in Philadelphia, but what we love about this is there’s a train station right here. It’s very well-programmed, and these are swings, which I’ll show you in a second. It becomes a very welcoming gateway when you come in off the train from, when you come into Philadelphia. This is a very welcoming gateway as you emerge from the station. An outdoor reading room potentially, and seating area in front of the library, more space for the café to spill outside with a canopy, with weather protection. And we think you should introduce some swings here because, whether they’re porch swings or, this is at the 30th Street porch, Philadelphia, this is in Burlington, Vermont. These are very, so these are very simple things to do that can actually make a place fun. And suddenly you’re, you know, this is normalizing another kind of seating activity. And then fun, some kind of fun seating over at the Rosa Parks Plaza at the LTD where you could use, you know, this is in Baltimore, people would love to sit on this, or just some simple kinds of seating where teenagers could look like they belong, you know? They’re not just standing around like asparagus spears. And some elements at the entry. So at the entrance plaza at Rosa Parks Plaza, some information and food. We love the pretzel guy that’s there now, so we’re just kind of building on that idea. You know, the pretzel guy is doing a terrific job, we think. And then in front of the community college, places for students to gather, could be very informal like this, and/or, you know, it could be picnic tables, could be study, could be different types of places for people to come together to study and have lunch. But, you know, take advantage, you’ve got space there that could be really, you know, used. We know it’s not yours, but we think that the four corners should all be activated. And here’s what in front of the library could look like with the canopy, some swings, some seating, café seating, more seating over here for the café, outdoor reading area. So beanbag chairs here, those are beanbag chairs there. So have some fun with it, you know? Make it colorful, exciting, you know, and then it’ll feel much more welcoming. This is actually looking at seating in front of the community college and some things going on over at the LTD. And finally, Halt. So Halt is really such a great magnet. It’s your cultural institution in the downtown. I mean, you have several, but this is the city’s. And it’s really important destination for folks. But what about bringing, and they are programming it, you know, I know. Your Cultural Services Group is fantastic. They’re doing a lot of great programming on Thursday nights. So we think that, you know, build on that. How can you make it easier for them to program? That kind of bringing the indoors out is what we’re looking for, and partnering with the Hilton so they do more of that, so they have more outdoor activities. So make it look vibrant, you know, and create or enhance that strong connection for pedestrians to walk through so that they know they can get through, so it’s more visible, so they can get to North Willamette. Make the whole area more visible, make it like one bigger public space, more unified and permeable, enhance the entrances, and improve the crossings on Sixth and Seventh because we because we think those are really difficult barriers in your downtown, particularly, well, they are both, really. But to go from, you know, crossing Willamette to get from the downtown to get to the Halt is difficult, and vice versa. So making that easier will help pull people who are going to the Halt for performances, it'll, it'll help pull them into the downtown to go out, you know, for a drink after the theater, or, you know, to go, to go have dinner and then come to the theater. So that connection needs to be tighter. So you've got this pit problem at the Halt, and they're programming it so beautifully, but you can't see the programming, it's not visible. And then you've got these walls that are crawling with ivy and they're also blocking views. So our, you know, I can think our big recommendation, recommendation here is filling in the pit and opening up these walls. So the big idea is really raising that area up, whether it's, and it would need to be studied, is it a little bit below grade, is it at grade, is it a little bit above grade? But creating a usable space there. Continuing the seating at your entrance and making that more welcoming, maybe move your marquee so it's not blocking views, create a more exciting blank wall over here, perhaps with gardens. And then really usable terrace in front of the Hilton and the convention center, outdoor dining here, and entrance here, which I'll show you in a second, that could be down, down and up to the lobby level and down to the gallery level, and then can keep the Japanese garden pretty much the way it is. So this is that, it could be up or it could be down, but at any rate, it's, you have this kind of meandering path through, and you've, we've taken out the walls and replaced them with steps, and this becomes a performance area, you can put movie screens here and people can sit up here and watch. So it's really opening it up a lot. And then this becomes a little terrace up on the upper level at the lobby level. So performances outdoors are fantastic there, small scale, and outdoor movies, but you could also use it along with the Hilton for convention, outdoor convention space, for parties, for fundraisers, intermission, there could be a, a party, you could put tents there. So create a space that's really flexible, that's not just an amphitheater, but is also flexible for a variety of functions that the Hilton could use too. So this is what we think it could look like. So this is your sort of, is your sort of performance area where you could have movies over here or a little stage down here. And then build a mound that leads up, that people can sit on to watch performances, but it also leads to a lobby level entrance here, that's also accessible from that ramp that's coming from Sixth Avenue. And work in, we haven't worked out the details, this isn't a design, it's just an idea, but have access, we keep access to the gallery downstairs, so, so that you can actually go up or down there. We think that, that could be, you know, kind of a functional, easy thing to do, and then the Hilton can have outdoor dining here. So those are the spaces, and I wanted to talk about next steps and sort of, sort of big picture items. So what we're going to do next is we're going to finalize these recommendations and into a report format when we get your comments. And we are going to work with city staff and their partners and organizations that have been forming and that have been coming forth to discuss management and implementation strategies. Then we want to continue, after we give you the report, we want to continue to help the city staff with design review and when they, when actually this starts to get implemented, we want to continue to be involved in that. And then the city staff, did you want to talk about your, your next steps?
What the city staff will do with our partners, will begin the lighter, quicker, cheaper, cheaper activation, and then we'll proceed to design scoping, project scoping and design development, and then we will return to council for funding decisions and for the use of urban renewal for any of those projects that will require a public hearing. We will also continue to work with our partners to create these special places in the heart of our city. Thank you.
Great. So some of the things that we've talked about are, and that we're hoping the staff will start to implement immediately, are we call lighter, quicker, cheaper interventions. And some of the thoughts that we had were, you know, start to do it right away, start to do it in the spring. And it, it, that means, you know, you're thinking about it right now. You can introduce, without major infrastructure changes, although you, you may want to take down some of the walls to open, or in spots to open up some space, and that can be studied a little more, but mostly this is not about infrastructure, this is about programming, introducing games and play, events and performances, building on the kinds of things you did over the holidays with the winter days, bringing in perhaps food trucks, mobile food carts, temporary staffed food and information kiosks, test it out, you know? Have a simple kiosk there that's about information and whether you could sell hot dogs or something. So trying new, trying out different things. So we believe these, think of these as experiments that can lead to long-term solutions and what you want to do in the long term. They could direct you a little differently, you know, in the terms of the long-term build out. And then we're going to be talking a lot with staff and their partners about management. We think that management, 80% of the success of a public space can be attributed to good management, and we can give you lots and lots of examples of where that's true. It's not about design, you know, it's not about, it's, it's not about just if you build it, they will come. It's about really making it happen on an everyday basis, and this requires really good management. The best public space in the, in the country are not managed solely by city government. They're managed by nonprofits and bids and partnerships and a variety of other types of organizations. So another thing to think about is how you manage your public spaces in conjunction with the rest of the downtown. So streets and businesses and business recruitment and promoting the downtown, how does this all work together? So for example, could there be a partnership among the city nonprofit, city, let's say the Bid or the Eugene, Downtown Eugene, Inc., or other organizations, and a nonprofit entity that perhaps you form? This is just one example, there's many examples, but, but one thing that's going to be really, really important is to engage with local partners. You've got lots of great organizations in this downtown and in the city who can, you can partner with. City doesn't have to do it all. The city should not do it all. And finally, make this into a campaign that you sustain over time, that doesn't end with this, with the downtown public spaces or these public spaces, continue to think about it over time. You're never finished, this is going to be, and, you know, an ongoing, it's not even a project, it's an ongoing campaign and effort, engaging the streets, you know, working with the social service providers. And then continue this out into your parks. So how can you make this a citywide campaign? So we believe that you have to really turn everything upside down to get it right side up. You have to look at this in a whole new way than perhaps you've been looking at it, and you have to do things in a new way as well. And this requires bold action. So just for everybody's edification, our findings report is, is on, at this website. Check out pps.org.
Hi Emily.
You can all answer.
Everybody dance.
So you can check out, check out PPS's website because it's a terrific resource. So we've got lots of ideas up on our website that, and a lot of examples, so, which you might be interested in checking out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, that was really terrific, inspiring, and I'll just, I'm going to, I have several people in the queue, but I just want to thank you for this. I was struck both by how sterile are many of our public spaces are and how you've pointed that out to us, that we've created a kind of sterility, and, and this idea of the partnerships, how we're siloed in so much of our thinking about these spaces, and what you're suggesting to us is sort of break through those and see it as a, as a collaboration, so very, very interesting, and, and thank you. So in the queue, I have first Chris, then Claire, then Alan.
Thank you. Very, very exciting presentation. And what I think in particular is exciting is the whole notion of looking and seeing what is, and imagining what could be. And I think imagining what could be is just the most exciting thing. And I know it was at least a couple of years ago when I first started imagining what the park blocks could be, and, and how we should, after so many years of neglect, have that conversation. So I'm really gratified that we're actually doing that. And what's also really exciting for me is we're going through a process that I think is really the critical way to do it, where you first learn, and then you think, and then you act, and then you reflect on, on what happened. And I think the learning portion has been very good, and I even participated in it, and I can confirm, I was at the, one of the locations where they had a pop-up where people would put the dot voting. And what was interesting was when I got there, there were very few dots, and when I would ask people, why don't you start voting, let's put some dots up here, and they would say, what's the point? I don't want to go downtown because it's so dirty and filthy and nasty. And I said, well, if that were taken care of, then would you vote? And then dots started going up. So we have to deal with that first issue first, and I, I don't, I don't see that as an insurmountable obstacle, but you're right, we do have to address it, we have to confront it and deal with it in, in a balanced way. But I think the, the critical element is we're in the thinking stage now, and, you know, what do we need to do? And I think that not only engages all of us, but as you say, other partners. And then once we've done that thinking and identified some sources and some specific plans, for us, I think the, the stumbling block over the years has been translating that into action. Over the decades that I've lived here, I have seen many, many plans, many, many efforts, many, many creative ideas that never get translated into the action stage for whatever reason, often a lack of will, but also a lack of money. And so I think it becomes our responsibility to find both the will and the money to make our imagination a reality, and that while that's not necessarily your issue, hopefully you have given us sufficient excitement and imagination that it can fuel the willingness to go into the next action stage. We've allocated a little bit of money through the urban renewal process, which I'm extremely gratified for. But to do the kinds of things that we can imagine doing will take more than that, what that resource is, and we're going to need to talk about where we can go to do that, because when I imagine what this could be, it inspires me to take action, to want to do something. And so hopefully the rest of us will feel that same sense of action. But the work you've done today and the presentation you've made, I think has inspired me in a way that really compels me to want to take action. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you, Mayor, and my apologies for arriving late. Very wonderful presentation, really appreciate the efforts on gathering public input and visiting the spaces and the thoughtful approach that you've taken here. I agree with Chris, it, it really sparks the imagination and makes us think about what might be possible if we have the energy and the resources to make it happen. So I have a number of kind of comments and, and observations. You know, the aspect about downtown being dirty, you know, I agree with you, I, I've been to other downtowns that are much less attractive than ours, but still that's a perception. And, you know, I had the privilege of visiting Paris, which is a very heavily pedestrian and car city, I mean, constant use all the time. And I realized that at four o'clock in the morning, they had a cleaning crew come through with huge high-pressure hoses and just cleaned the sidewalk and the gutter, and that was a routine that they had to maintain the beauty of that city. Now, obviously that requires resources, but I think it's something we might want to consider for some of our main thoroughfares in downtown. You know, we just had a presentation on the wayfinding proposal, and so there's a real dovetail here in terms of how we take advantage of both of these initiatives to really build on each other, because many of the things you pointed to, like the Halt Center Plaza, will really benefit from the wayfinding piece that we considered the other day. I'm not surprised that you heard a lot of compassion from folks around, folks who are in need of social services. I do get a little discouraged. We do have day-use facilities, they just aren't located downtown. So there's the Lindholm Center on Highway 99, and so I don't know if we need to work better to connect folks with the services we do have or relocate some of those, but we have a lot of social services, and I think while we might need more, there are some out there that maybe are underutilized. I, I might need a second round, Mayor. I love, I, I pretty much like all your recommendations for the various spaces. The park blocks in particular, removing the stone walls, the family park on the east side, I think those are great. One challenge I see, the current businesses that face the park blocks are financial institutions and court-related institutions, and they don't lend themselves to the facing of the street that you're speaking to, and we don't control those properties, so I'm not really sure how we would start to move in that direction, though I recognize the need for that. Anything about restrooms on the park blocks?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, and we've been having ongoing conversations. And we, you know, we, we do think there are a couple, there are some ideas to explore. So of course, one idea is when you build the city hall and, you know, the new farmer's market, indoor/outdoor space, covered area, whatever you want to call it, there could be restrooms there. But you probably will need more adjacent to the park blocks. So some, we don't want to build one huge, you know, we don't want to take up a whole lot of space. So we've also been talking about, could there be a restroom carved out of one of the buildings facing the park blocks across the street that's managed by the city, built and managed by the... Well, maybe, maybe it's managed by somebody else. We're talking about management in other ways, right? But maybe it's built by the city. And you could have small-scale restaurant activity within the park blocks, but maybe it's with a, you know, it's key, you have to get the key from an operator, or, you know, if there's something, the kids, you know, let's say you have a lot of kids coming down to use the, the family park, you may need some small, a small amount of restrooms right there. And maybe there, there's, it's a staffed kiosk. I didn't mention that we think that it's really important to have staff folks there, even when you're doing your lighter, quicker, cheaper intervention, you know, to have people there. And those folks can, could manage small restrooms, they wouldn't really be able to manage anything larger, but, and, and provide information and provide games and maybe sell food, so they can do a number of things. So it's really, maybe, you know, we don't have the, the exact solution yet, but there's a good discussion going on, everybody acknowledges that you need them and they would need to be staffed, especially, you know, in the, in the first few years. So, so it is, it is a, it's a work in progress, but I think it's, it's a definite need that we, we acknowledge.
Great. I will need a second round, Mayor, but just one question, I'm just curious, city manager, we talked about the winter's day programming being very successful, and I'd be curious to kind of know what that cost us in terms of expense and staff resources?
We can provide that.
Thank you. Alan?
Great work, very impressed. This is very exciting. We need to bottle Meg's enthusiasm and, and put it in downtown. You know, there's, might be a downtown manager position available. Great ideas, I think the, a whole notion of activating the spaces to get people there is really what we're talking about. I totally agree that the safety issue is, is, needs to be dealt with, it's first, tackled at first, it's paramount to making all of this work. And, you know, what I got out of what you said was there's really no silver bullet for any of these spaces, it's, it's, it's a bunch of things that add up to a rather large transformation of each of these spaces. And I like the notion of that long-term campaign as opposed to, you know, with partners, as opposed to, you know, just a couple of quick and dirty things, that's not going to, not going to work, it's got to be managed, programmed, activated, infrastructure changes, so that campaign is, is great. I like the, the lighter, quick and cheaper as a jumpstart, that, that makes sense to me. I also echo that the greenery and the seating and the eating and drinking of each of those spaces is really, I got that very clearly, that all of that stuff needs to occur in order for, for those spaces to be revitalized. And right now, they're just very sterile, not green, there's no place to sit, there's, there's no, they're unwelcoming, there's no eating, drinking going on, it's just not a very welcoming place. I, I like the ideas of the, of the infrastructure, I think they're good, I think especially in the park blocks, a lot of those things are inhibiting the use of the park blocks. And I like that Saturday Market fits in there better, looked like than, than it, once we do that. That gets funded by the urban renewal. That gets funded by the Urban Renewal District money that we allocated. Is the, are the, are the new city hall and the halt in the Urban Renewal District, or are they just outside there?
The four projects that were approved for Urban Renewal, one of them is the park blocks and open spaces. So we're able to use that money, it was up to 5.2 million, in the open spaces and the connections between them. The farmer's market is a separate project, but we're trying to keep them, think of them as one overall concept.
Is the Holt Center in the Urban, Holt Plaza, is that in the Urban Renewal District?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the downtown manager that Denny was talking about before, and that is funded through Urban Renewal? Or we haven't got there yet?
That's a conversation that we're going to have, because there's a lot of different ways of looking at that. So there's no, there's, I actually personally think that the city shouldn't pay downtown manager solely. I think, or be the sole employer of a downtown manager, because it really is, I think, a partnership. And we're going to be talking about that this afternoon, actually, with city staff and developing some recommendations.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Your group that worked with us.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you for that. That was very lovely. Couple of questions. First about methodology with regard to the research stuff around the 2,000 people. Did you, how did you segment or categorize or think about getting broad representation with those 2,000 people? I mean, did you, did you set out with intentional categories of some kind in advance?
Well, we didn't. I mean, we wanted, we attempted to get the survey monkey of, you know, broadly available. We reached out to high school students, we reached out to the university, we sent it to folks we knew who were working with, you know, students in those schools. We wanted to get young peoples and, you know, we wanted to get a broad range. And so we did the best we could. We probably could have used more responses from teenagers and people in their 20s, but we got a really good response from people, and also seniors, I think. But we did get good response from people in 30s, 40s, 50s.
So I'm hearing you say you thought about it demographically. Did you think about it geospatially?
Geospatially, probably where people were coming from when they responded.
We did, we, every time, we made sure that we had the pop-up stations. I think we had at least something in each of the wards of the city. And those were, those were the best opportunities we had to reach people in the locations and just going about daily life. And we would always hand out information about the survey with the link to the website. The survey report does include which, when people, we asked about their neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that you can look at in that is the distribution of neighborhoods.
That's what you want, yeah. Yeah, so we did ask them, we asked them where they live. And so that's in the, you know, what district they live in, right? So that's in, that is in our report.
And see the metadata, I mean, the detail level data. Did you get an even representation by city council ward, would you say?
I didn't look at it by ward. We did, we looked at it by neighborhood, which you can kind of extrapolate. The, it wasn't even across all of the neighborhoods, but I think there was a distribution of the most common neighborhood, or the neighborhoods that had the most responses.
Okay. I'd love some help to look more at that. Another piece for me is, I wonder if you looked at something else in this. One of the great advantages to living in Eugene, and that we are all, everybody that lives here is very proud of, is the, our emphasis, our appreciation for the outdoors, our love of parks and our love of capacity to do things outdoors. I think we're blessed to have more of them than many people do.
Yes.
Did you look at this in terms of usage with a competitive dynamic in mind? In other words, if somebody wants to go outside to use a space, and Alton Baker Park is right over there, and they have to choose, do I go downtown to do that, or do I go over here a couple of blocks to Alton Baker Park? Whether they would choose to do one or the other for any particular reason? Did you look at that dynamic of the competitive other places to be outdoors?
Well, that's an interesting question. I can't say that we really looked at that in detail, but we thought about who, we thought about it maybe from a sort of different perspective. First, who are the users who are there?
Okay.
Who you, you want to, you want to provide better services and more opportunities for them to eat outdoors, meet their friends. So that's downtown employees and people who are, you know, city hall employees.
Already there.
Who are already there. That's number one. Who are the people who are missing that you would really like to have downtown, not just because you've got a recreational space, which it's more than a park? We think of these public spaces as kind of intrinsically connected to the rest of the downtown. Our, your downtown businesses would like to attract more people downtown. They would like to attract more families. I think the, you know, your, your cultural institutions would like to attract more people downtown. So it's about making the downtown comfortable for everybody. And so we're thinking about, and we heard this both from, in our surveys, a lot of people said, oh, I think I said this before, you know, there is not enough for families to do. We don't take our families, we'd love to bring our families downtown. So we heard that again and again. And we think we heard it from the business owners, too. We don't get enough, you know, families, we don't get enough of, you know, of a wider cross-section of our population downtown.
Where they speak...
You know, so that's from a, you know, economic development point of view, too. And so these two things kind of help each other. You know, when you attract more people to your public spaces, they're going to spend some time in your downtown as well and eat and shop and, and help your, you know, help the businesses.
When you, did you drill down on the, there's not enough for families to do, whether it was public or private? In other words, is it the, is it the lack of the space, or is it that the business selection of things?
Well, people said, we didn't always have the chance to go back and ask them what they meant, because they were survey respondents. But, but we heard when we, you know, in focus groups and when we talked to people at the pop-up stations, they said, yeah, there's not enough commercial activity for families, there's not enough shops for, you know, so it was a wide range, family restaurants, it was a wide range of things. However, you know, I think that there are a number of things downtown for families, but they don't know about them.
Right.
And, you know, maybe they need to be better promoted. And that's probably true of a lot of things in your downtown that could be, maybe promoted better to a wider audience. So, you know, it's, it's a combination of things.
Okay.
And, you know, when we look at public spaces, we look at them in a downtown like this, we look at them differently from, from a park that's used more for recreation, recreational purposes. It's not, not that we look at parks a lot.
Right.
But when it's in the downtown, it really needs to serve a variety of functions, you know, that maybe a more, a greener park that's more recreation-focused doesn't have to serve. Because we want to, you know, and I mentioned them already, you know, it has an economic development bent, it's going to be a, your cultural arts programmers are really excited about having more areas to program, better stage, more space potentially for outdoor programs. So it's serving those functions that can actually bring people together in, you know, in your downtown and not disperse them, so as they may be now.
Lastly, it seemed like you were making recommendations with regard to the public safety aspects of this and the crisis nature of it, that an increase in human services was somehow prescribed. Was that something that you gathered from the, the survey work that you did, that people told you that?
We spoke to, wow, probably a dozen social service providers, both public and nonprofit. And even this morning, you know, we, we met again with four people we hadn't had a chance to meet with. So probably every major social service provider that you've heard of, we, we spoke to, either in phone interview, focus groups, or, yeah, individually. So we've heard this from, we also talked a lot to the police department, to Chief Kearns, to Sergeant Julie Smith. So we've had a lot of contact. We've, we spoke to your court system. We spoke to the judge.
Alan.
Alan, yes, Cheryl Stone. And we learned about the community court. You know, it was, I have to tell you, we had, it was like a puzzle we were putting together. And there were all these different pieces, and we had to go searching everywhere for all the pieces. And we still haven't put it all together. And it's not our job to put it together, but we wanted to have a better understanding of what the issues are and what people are trying to do about them. So that's why we spoke to all these different people. So these ideas are not coming from me or Project for Public Spaces, although we have worked with social service providers in other spaces in similar ways. But these were coming from all these experts, your experts in the city.
So you're reflecting back to us, since there are more of them, what many of the social service providers were telling you?
Yep.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is because it's my contention that we do provide a good amount of human services in our community compared to others, certainly than compared to Springfield or compared to other like cities. But we fall down on the job and we don't do an adequate job with enforcing the laws that we already have. And there's, there's a subtle difference there.
Yeah.
I, I think we have room to do a better job of enforcement and perhaps some of the other issues around human services as well. And so I was trying to explore that.
Yeah, no, it's a, you know, the two things go hand in hand. And we heard, it's a very complex issue and the enforcement issue is really critical, too. And, you know, setting a higher bar for your expectations and for behaviors. And how do you do that? And then, you know, and how do you deal with, we heard from the police and social service providers that, you know, it's easy to deal with one person at a time, but when you get 60 people in a group, it's often very difficult, you know? So that's, they, there's power in numbers and people feel invincible when they're in a big group, and they're not going to be as compliant and, you know, and it's going to be much more difficult to enforce. So how do you, you know, how do you, how do you manage that? I don't have the answer to that. But we, you know, there are a lot of really, really good people in this city who are working on this issue. And I'll, you know, I can say a couple of observations. One is, I think there are certain things that are falling through the cracks. And we heard, for example, about, about a downtown-located day-access center, where if you are, if people are being moved out, I should say, if, if they need a place to go because there's an activity going on, like a Saturday market, right? There's someplace for them to go. If they need a place to sleep, it would be great, we heard, this is what we heard, if there are not just dry shelters, but also wet shelters that will accept people who are substance abusers. So, you know, I am no expert at this, but this is, this is what we've heard. And so there, there are these gaps and there are, I think, this is my observation, actually, that there's lots of different organizations working very hard, public and nonprofit, but it seems like there's no kind of general umbrella or coalition of all these groups that, that are really, really working together. They meet, you know, maybe occasionally, and I know there's the Poverty and Homeless Board that you're required to have, and they're working, you know, to bring folks together. But it does seem like there could be more of a, of a, more collaboration and more of a coalescing of, of these organizations. That's my observation. I see the same thing with downtown organization. You've got a lot of people working in the downtown, doing lots of different things, and they need to coalesce as well. So it's like no shortage of great people doing stuff. It's, how do you organize them to be more effective?
Okay, I have two people in the queue and then a second round, and we're at seven minutes. So just, we may have to extend to do the motion. So next up is Greg.
Two things, real briefly, and maybe it's a longer answer than I'm anticipating. But one is, is that how do we create more culturally relevant spaces? And specifically for some of the changing demographics that we have in the community. So if we've got more Latino families that are coming and moving into the area, and I know that, you know, they'll be in some of our parks, particularly in Peterson Barn Park and some other places, where you could have multiple things going on. You could have a soccer game and a picnic, all going at the same time. But how do we, how are we going to be able to create space within the concepts that you laid out that can be more flexible in terms of accommodating some of the cultural events and things that people want to engage? That's one. And the second is a continuing frustration of mine around the fact that I have an 11-year-old daughter, she plays a lot of sports. And this, this last summer, I went to Salem and three-on-three basketball tournament, and they were able to take all of their spaces around the Capitol and closed streets and all of that. And you had a tournament with 2,000 kids out there, plus their parents, plus we're spending money in Salem, not Eugene. So, you know, I know that we have some constraints and some limitations space-wise, but I think that there are things that we could do, including filling in the pit next to the halt, that could be ways for us to create more open space to accommodate those kinds of activities. Thoughts on those two issues?
Also, we, we did interact with some Hispanic groups, and they've, there's also an interesting report that, I'm not sure the city did it, but, you know, talking to Latino groups in town about what their needs are and what would encourage them to come downtown and use public spaces. And I think a couple of things come to mind. One is safer, because they really want to bring their families. And I think that's the second thing, is they want to bring their families, so they want space so that the, that there's a lot of things to, for families to do. So it's not just a, you know, a single population that's attracted. So they're, they, they would love to come down for picnicking and music. And then I think in, when you start to program, you know, these, the park blocks more frequently, engage with these folks as partners in terms of programming and, and get some more music and theater that really is, will be attractive to, to your, you know, your different cultures in this town. And, you know, we've seen some great events where they bring different cultures together and they have, you know, you have multicultural festivals and, and different types of food and coming together in the downtown, and that brings everybody together. So that's another, another way to look at it. And then in terms of your, the ideas about, I think that's really interesting, that Salem closed streets in order to put on, they figured out how to attract, you know, a lot of people. And we think there's tremendous potential in closing, if you want to do bigger events. And you did it with the Eugene Celebration, I think, for many years, closing streets. And you can experiment with it and see which ones work best. But we think you could close Eighth and Oak in your civic heart at the park blocks and do, do more interesting programs there, different types of festivals and art fairs and maybe sports programming. And I will say that we spent a lot of time actually improving and activating and transforming the public spaces in downtown Detroit. And a few things that became big attractions were actually very simple to do. One was, we, we put a beach right in the heart of the downtown, and it was like right on their, in their main, the little park that's right in the downtown. And then there was some space that wasn't being utilized next to that park, and we, we brought in some half-basketball courts and volleyball courts. And this is all temporary stuff, you know, it's just there for a few months. But then people all started creating basketball leagues for after-work basketball games, matches. And, and it was really interesting way of engaging folks from the neighborhoods with the workers downtown to play basketball and volleyball right in the downtown. So you can, you know, you can, these, you're limited in the space you have, obviously, but you, through closing streets and experimenting with unusual uses, I think, and you said it, that these places have to be flexible. And I may not have emphasized that enough. We don't want to fill these spaces with design elements and too much landscaping, because that actually limits what you can do. You know, we've been looking a lot at, a good model to look at is Boise, Idaho. They have the Grove Plaza right in their downtown, and they've kept it as flexible and open as possible, because they say that's the way it functions the best. And, you know, and they have day-to-day stuff that goes on, but they want to be able to accommodate a lot of different things.
We're going to, just in observant of time, we have two minutes left, so we have a motion to extend.
Ten minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor of extending the meeting 10 minutes? One, two, three, four, five? Okay, five, we're extended. All right, next up is George.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll try to make this quick. Did I hear you say that your, this report's going to be online?
I think it, we'll put it online.
It is online.
The draft is now.
Yeah, I would suggest that anybody that has access to a computer, take the time to... Yeah, I would suggest that anybody that has access to a computer, take the time to go through and read this. It's pretty much everything, I believe, there's a lot of things that were said in that and also in the presentation, which is very, both of them are excellently done, is a lot of what people in this community have already either said to one of us or what their vision is or what their hopes is for the community. The, the big problem is getting there. And I think there's several issues that are going to hold us back from getting there. And one of them is financially. And, and I agree, we need to do a great deal more partnering with, whether it be public-private or going in with, with Lane County to try to help move some of these visions forward. The other issue is the, the negative and antisocial behavior that we're seeing in the downtown area. You know, you say, one way to do that is bring people in with positive behavior, get rid of the negative behavior, but it's a chicken and egg conversation as far as I'm concerned. You're not going to get those people there until you address this issue. So that's, that's another inseparable issue. And then the third issue, which is probably just as important as all, as the other two, is addressing the homeless issue and the, the social service needs of, of the less fortunate in our community. And I think those are our three pri-- primary priorities, rather, to actually taking first steps in, in moving forward with this vision. Because, you know, this is what I'd like to see Eugene become. It's just getting there is going to be the, the tough, the tough draw on it.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you. So I noticed on your diagram for the park blocks that you were showing the streets as two-way streets. Can you speak to that briefly?
I'll try that.
You want to, you start and yes, we--
We have, we're implementing the Willamette to Willamette initiative. We've talked about that with council. And we have for a long time been working to make Eighth go two-way. We haven't had as much discussion about the park streets, oh, I call them plural because there are multiple segments, going two-way, but that's something that we're going to look into. And the idea is that it's just easier to get where you want to go.
Great, thank you for pointing, I'm glad we pointed that out.
Go as fast on two-way.
Right, it's a traffic calming move and it also creates more activity on the street, which seems counterintuitive, but that's, that is the case. I really like your suggestion for temporary art exhibits, whether that's on the park blocks or Keyzee Plaza. And the retractable canopy and lightweight structure for Keyzee Square, I think those are excellent suggestions and could get at some of the challenges we have with programming that space. One thing I saw in one of your recommendations that I think might be challenging is the outdoor apron outside the library. Because of the transit station there and the vehicle traffic, it can get very loud with car engines coming by. And so it's not necessarily the most conducive place to sit and read a book. But I like your swing seating idea as well. I think that is imaginative and could be great right there at the library. And I also really appreciate your suggestion that we just start experimenting with things and see how they work. And if they don't work, move on to something else. So those are the last of my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. Thank you very, very much. It was really inspiring and we feel, I think, hopeful and eager to get to work. So we look forward to the next round. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. It's been really a pleasure working with the city.
Great, great. Okay, we have one piece of business. Alan, you have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution 5184, supporting allocation of $6 million in lottery-backed bond funds to Eugene Civic Alliance for development of a community sports and recreational facility on the former Civic Stadium property. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
Hey.
Long-standing history of support for the sports and rec facility at this site, when it was before it burned down, was gonna, saving the Civic Stadium, but also turning into a family sports and rec facility. In fact, we facilitated the process by buying the property on a first right refusal from, from the school district and then simultaneously turning it over to the Eugene Civic Alliance, who amazingly came up with $4.5 million. And I did check with staff whether or not, and there was any conflicts with this, and there, there weren't any when, when I talked to them about that. Eugene Civic Alliance is a group of volunteers and, and folks and kids' sports and that group together, hundreds of volunteer hours to get to this point so far, to put this together. The two exhibits on the, on the, that are attached, the one is the, the site plan and the landscaping, which was graciously done by Cameron McCarthy, so a reputable firm in town. And then the second page, which was the construction budget. The construction portion of it, the $26.7 million, is actually an estimate put together by, by Chambers Construction, so I think it has some validity. Overall, the, the total cost made, $37 million, and they have about $7 million, so they need 30. This would knock that down if they got the lottery, lottery funds down to about $24 million. Still a daunting task, but a, a very doable for this worthy, worthy space that we create. And I know a lot of people are excited about it. So what they ask here is for us to support their application to the state for lottery funds in the tune of $6 million. So it's not any city money involved in this, it's the state lottery bonds that are already being sold. So it's an allocation of that. That's a grant.
Okay. George?
Thank you. Yeah, a question to Alan. Does this include the use of video lottery proceeds, monies that, that go to our neighbors? Or is it just from the other? You've got two different types of lottery money. You've got video lottery money and then you've got the regular. So does this include the video lottery proceeds?
I don't know.
Okay. The problem with that is if it does, I think what I would want before I vote on this, if it does involve the video lottery, is an economic impact statement on local and regional entities that receive such dollars, such as our schools, parks, economic development programs regionally. Have you reached out to Sarah Means to see how this would impact Lane County's programs if it is video lottery money?
No, I haven't.
Okay. So what I would suggest, maybe a friendly mo, a friendly amendment that specifically states video lottery funds other than video lottery? I don't know how to, how I would word that properly, but what I want to do is remove the video lottery money out of that because that's earmarked to go to the different counties throughout the states. So it wouldn't only affect Lane County, it affects other counties' programs in parks, schools and economic--
My understanding is this is the economic development funds that are allocated to project-specific things. That's my understanding.
Well, I, I think what I would want is a better clarification of where the, what type of lottery funds these are.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. These are lottery-backed bonds. The difference, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, I could easily be wrong, is that it's simply that they're asking for bonding authority. And those bonds are repaid with lottery dollars on a regular schedule. So the question then becomes, with X amount of dollars of, of bonding authority, is our asking for, this little slice, the $6 million in bonding authority, pushing out something that is to, that maybe Lane County is counting on in terms of the limited amount of bonding authority that there is? It's not actual dollars because the repayment of those bonds is on another track and the actual dollars are on another track. But it's the bonding authority that, that's at question here. So, you know, you can, you can borrow X number of dollars in a given year and then lottery monies will be used to pay that back on an ongoing basis. So I think what we really need to know is, is if we're, if we're, if we're saying, please, you know, approve $6 million in bonding authority for this, that we're not, at the same time by doing that, making a choice that it's more important than something else Lane County is advocating or something else. So we kind of need to know what else is being advocated for bonding authority to make that decision. At least I do.
Emily?
I just want to reiterate what I think I'm hearing are the concerns is if we give the $6 million, where might we be or larger people be losing $6 million? Not that I don't support Civic, I do absolutely, and I'd love to see them get another $6 million. But there's also other projects that I think are also urgent. And Civic has such an appeal that it might be funded in other ways. So I'm not against this, I just want to know more ramifications.
Is this time-sensitive, Alan?
No, well, somewhat, but yeah. It is in the legislature, while the legislature's in session, so it's not immediately time-sensitive.
It's the next meeting.
So we can push it off and find--
Let's put it off to the next meeting when we can have more clarification. Did you have one more thing you wanted to say?
No, I was just, what Emily, what Emily said, you know, it's not that I'm opposed to this. I mean, I think this is a great, great addition to the city and I applaud the people working on this. I just don't want to do something inside the city that's going to negatively impact the county or one of the other cities within Lane County that is depending on some of the funds.
So we have a motion on the table and a second, so there's two options. Councilor Zalink, you can withdraw the motion and withdraw the second, or you can do a, a motion to postpone to next Tuesday, the--
Motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you, thank you, that's perfect. And we made it.
And we made it.